You're all ready to go?
You're on.
Good morning, Happy New Year. I'd like to call a work session with our selectmen to order for Friday, January 5th. Can we all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is Chief Shigori. Happy New Year, sir.
Happy New Year.
And you're on the, you're on appointment to talk about police facility study design warrant article.
Yes, so by the way, the, we have money set aside, obviously, at the Capital Reserve. As I got change a couple of years ago, it says that you need approval of the town meeting to spend any money on it. And obviously, before we can go forward much, we still have to have something to show people as far as a plan. So kind of like, we need something to get this primed, if you will, to say where we are and what we need. So I did reach out to a few chiefs. I spoke to Chief Wallensford, they're doing design build, so it's kind of a different ball of wax, but I talked to Raymond Chief, who's doing an addition for a new facility. He said it was gonna be around sixteen thousand for what they were doing. And I talked to Andre Coates, and he thought twenty twenty-five, so I'd asked for thirty as a safe number to make sure we had enough to get what we needed for next year's. Progressives will just ball down the field, if you will. Because we now are kind of, what we have, it might be a little dated, as far as cost estimates and size needs. So realistically, we couldn't ask for anything beyond that without some sort of plan. So that's where...
So what would the thirty thousand dollars provide us with?
An architect to do the study, to say, this is the size, and this is what it would look like. That's what it's for. Any of the testing that needs to be done.
Andre listens to?
From Bowlin. And he gave a ballpark number, so what it would cost. Not that I was going with any of these facility groups or anything, but it was just to give me an idea as to what to ask for as a warrant article. That's what that's about. Move progressives further along.
So the language of the, that the money's being held in requires that the town release it every year?
If it's coming from the Capital Reserve, it requires a vote at town meeting, yes. I'm not sure how the warrant article's proposed, whether it's proposed to come from Capital Reserve, unfunded, and doesn't even find balance, or from taxes, I'm not sure.
But there was money set aside?
There is a Capital Reserve fund for a new build.
So we just need to word that to raise the funds to do a design study?
And the recommendation that came out of CIP is not to pull it out of the Capital Reserve fund, but to budget money to do this work.
Instead of putting money towards the Capital?
Instead of putting more money, or add additional contribution in the Capital Reserve fund this year, that the town spent thirty thousand dollars to do this.
Which is less than we've been putting into the Capital Reserve.
So the Capital Reserve was initially set up to start building a fund to build the building?
That's correct.
Okay. And how much money did they run out?
I don't recall.
It's gotta be close to five hundred thousand, I think. It's for, are you, it's something, it's a lot between, it's right around five hundred thousand, I think.
You want to put a thirty thousand dollar warrant article out to pay for a design?
And whatever, if we have to do any kind of... You know, I know sometimes we did, like, when we did the fire station, they did the geotechnical study too, ahead of time, to see what they were gonna need for foundation, so we could have some kind of solid numbers to give for an estimate.
And then we'd need to locate it, I guess, if we're gonna give to the other extent.
Pick a location, yeah. And that might also be part of the, you know, looking at what location, I would hope that they would, you know, come to some sort of...
Recommendation.
Working with us, sort of recommendations, to what would be, what would cost here, what would cost there, if you will. I mean, the two locations that are primary to what we already own would be Dearborn property across from the library, or next to the fire station on that large lot there. Those are the two that we already own and would have space to do it. Other options may be, you know, out there that people consider, but those are two, obviously, that we already own. And have been discussed in the past.
Do you have anything in writing you can submit?
I could, I mean, I could submit basically what I just told you, that I've got these sorts of estimates.
Well, you could also submit the copy of the last police station report, right?
Yeah, I could do that.
And that offered three suggestions, right?
That offered three suggestions, a standalone building, add-on to the library, which seems to be, the library's added on there, so that's been off the table. So we're actually down to two suggestions, if that happens, standalone building or add-on here.
And if I remember correctly, I didn't bring my folder with me, but that committee did a basic design that could be used, either option, right? So that's a beginning spot.
It's a beginning spot, it was very basic.
It was a conceptual, or rendering?
Yeah. Not enough, though, that I don't think you could take it to town meeting and say, this is what it's gonna cost.
I do agree with you there.
And this is what it really needs to look like, there needs to be more work done on it, it was done kind of as a favor, at no cost, by someone who did some work for us in the past, an architect, but it was not...
Well, it's the cost of doing business when there are architects. I mean, I think that's something that's gotten lost here in top to bottom. I mean, I'd be willing to say that we put a thirty thousand dollar warrant article up, premised on at least five architectural bids with schematics, and then awarding that to whoever we decide to award it to.
No, I expect it would go up to bid.
Yeah, I want these people to do some work, I don't wanna just kind of check the thirty grand to somebody that we know, which happens, seems to be the way we operate around here. So if we're gonna put it out to bid, to get a number of architectural designs that we can look at, and then award it, I'm fine with that process, but I'm not, I'm not interested currently in putting thirty thousand bucks up on the table, and then having some people come in and say, yeah, well, for thirty thousand, we'll give you this. That's not telling me anything. I want them to show me what it is their plan is, and then if we award them the building, then we stop them. And if that system doesn't work in this environment, then it's a little less of next year. But that's the way I personally would look at this decision. We're only one selectman, there's two.
We went through this before, I mean, we had an amount that we could pay to hire somebody before, it was in the, I think, as I recall. And what we did is we got press for RFPs, and they showed their qualifications and that sort of thing, I don't think they're gonna do, I don't think they're gonna give a, their problem, I was thinking they would do some, repeat some of the work that we did with the needs assessment, if you will, to some degree, to have, I guess, my concern, yes, that'd cost some money, but I also think it gives some, another outside look at it, if you will. Because I, you know, when we came up with a square footage, it was forty-nine hundred square feet. People in town were tossing around a lesser number of square feet, so I guess I'm thinking to give objectivity, have an outside kind of come, go for the different, if they see, see what they see.
Well, it seems to be, in any event, the first step of moving toward a facility is you have to establish the need, okay? Doing a current needs assessment, we got something from several years ago, but I agree with you, having a third party that's objective, provide us with a, here's the amount of space that we ought to have in the facility to meet all the needs, including, you know, future needs here in town.
So you're saying a two-part?
So the needs assessment's a first piece, right? Right. And then, based on that, at design. And it makes sense to me that we would, from a needs assessment, solicit interest from more than one design, designer, architect, and based upon the input that we get from them, select somebody to do the design. Now, how much work they would do in terms of, my guess is you're not gonna get an architectural rendering of, here's the building we'll design for you for X amount of dollars, but...
But they must have done it before, I guess, that's where I'm looking from. So if they've got...
But definitely, that'd be hard to review, I would think, of who we select, is what they show for their qualifications.
Sure. Projects they've done in the past, and, you know, again, I presume that most of these firms are familiar with the competitive bidding process to get work. And not that that's always the situation, but you're gonna put a proposal together and come in and present it, and based upon the proposals, and not just, the proposal includes all kinds of things, which is experience as well, and then move forward from there.
So is the current needs assessment that we have, can we update that? Is that recent enough to update, or do we have to go right back to square one?
I would suspect it can be just updated, but I would like someone to kind of look at it and maybe validate it, if you will. I don't know that they need to start from square one, per se, but I don't...
So what would, who would do that? What would be your notion of who that would be? Is that, are there companies that do that?
Yeah, architects typically do that, they'll do a need assessment.
I mean, I just don't wanna have somebody get spit in the door, and all of a sudden we gotta buy that. That's the problem, I see what you're saying.
Well, I guess you could have two stages of it, I guess, you could have a needs assessment, and then you could have a separate for a design.
Yeah, I think that's exactly what Bill had mentioned. If we don't know what the needs are, we don't know what the square footage requirements are.
So it'd be two stages.
Regardless, we think we know what the needs are, and we've established in the past, these are the needs, but having somebody that's independent from us...
clarify that.
Provide us with a needs assessment, adjusts our thinking, or validates our thinking, or says, you guys are all wet, and this is what you need over here. But, you know, the whole idea, in my mind, of having somebody that's independent, that is involved in this world, that brings something to the table that we don't, in terms of...
Maybe recent experience with their own projects.
Yeah, and there's where, being the chief, and being in the position that you're in, that you could get some information from other police departments.
Right, that's, I did talk to Raymond, like I said, who's doing something, and Durham's doing something, but they're doing design, build, add-on with Bowlin, I believe is who's doing that. So, I mean, and I know Wallensford's going through a process, they're doing design, build, they're looking at a variety of different things, kind of interesting. They don't have... It's kind of a little interesting process going on there, it's a little different than what I've seen some other places do, but they're working through it, and, you know.
I'd be glad to weigh in here. First of all, and I'm just gonna speak common sense, there's not a person in this room that doesn't know that we've needed a police station for some time, and you've been very kind not to jump in front of other projects, okay? There is a report out, the BARTE committee, and it did an excellent job, that report was well received. In there, it kind of talked about a location. I think common sense says the location is on the property we already own, that's within sight of where kids are, the library, the playground, and the school. And other than someone who hates the police, really can't disagree with that, can they?
Probably not.
Okay. The land across the street has already been geo-tested.
And it's been surveyed, if I recall, by Bergeron.
And there were test pits, and so we know. So common sense to me says, boy, I'm kind of leaning toward that location so far, follow where I'm coming from. The next thing is that the rendering that you worked with on that committee, I think, is very functional. I've showed it to other police chiefs, and they say, yeah, you know, you did a good job allowing these people to really tour a part of the state, and they came back. And the idea was that whether it was to remodel the existing building over there, or plant the new building, we already have a rendering that I'm gonna say is ninety-nine percent there. Now, an architect might say, well, you know, you have a bathroom that's not handicap accessible, or your door isn't wide enough, you know, these are technical adjustments, correct? So we're already, other than putting the dollars up, we're already ninety percent there, aren't we?
Probably a bit of the way there.
Right.
I just think that validating that from an outside source would be valuable.
I agree with you there. Have you folks read the report?
Yes.
Have you read the report? It seems to be, from a layman, common sense point of view, pretty well, pretty well laid out? That's my opinion. The other thing, as far as coming up with the dollars, it makes no difference to me whether it's a warrant article, or we've got a warrant article to have it come out of the current funds that have been set aside. Not talking about the police station is, at what point do we slow the budget down a little bit? And that's a political consideration, I think, of, I'm not saying we're throwing money, in my career, I can say, moving this project along is an investment in our future, but, you know, I'm thinking of what people who come to me, who wanna support the project, but, gee boy, I'm worried about my taxes, too. I've spoken.
So you're thinking that there's enough work done, so that if we put an RFP out for a design, that we could include in that RFP an updating of the needs?
Yes. And I think the thirty thousand dollars is a reasonable figure, I'm willing to, I'll go along with the board of where you think the money should come from. It's tax dollars, no matter what. Is it tax dollars that have already been saved, or is it tax dollars, you know, to be raised? And I have no problem with town meeting making that decision.
Well, over the past few years, we've set aside money for the police station.
Yes.
So it's not unheard of to do it again this year, if we weren't in this discussion.
Well, the CIP has recommended two things. They've recommended putting money aside in Capital Reserve, and they've also recommended that this warrant article be outside the Capital Reserve. Am I correct on that?
Two warrant articles?
The, if I remember correctly, CIP did not recommend adding to the Capital Reserve this year, okay? They recommended funding this design work in lieu of...
Okay, I stand corrected.
And of course, thirty thousand is less than what we've been putting aside in the Capital Reserve over the last several years. My thought about taking it out of the Capital Reserve as opposed to taking it from current year's receipts is that the whole idea of putting this money aside is when we get to the point of building a facility, then we've got money set aside to do it. And we're not setting any additional monies aside toward future construction this year, I think it's appropriate that we, in lieu of that, fund this design work.
Do you folks have enough information, or do you wanna take a few days to think about it?
I mean, I don't, it's not really, only our decision, I mean, I think it's, it's a need that has to be addressed. Thirty grand is gonna get you to the point where you've got a design and a cost estimate. You still have to come back to the voters in 2019 and ask for more money if you wanna build the thing.
Correct.
The design isn't gonna spoil, it's not like milk. So if we have to wait another year, how would we wanna do it, accumulate more capital? And that's an option.
Though I think, if you wait too long, though, you know how the codes changes.
Yeah, you gotta do the needs, yeah.
Well, I don't know, needs maybe, but I'm also thinking codes change in the interim, if they sit too long.
Right, Jack. So I'm not opposed to presenting that as a warrant article to the voters, and then let them decide how they wanna proceed.
Does the money come out of the...
No, I think it has to, I kind of agree with Bill, it should be just a separate warrant article, and we'll leave the capital there for building. I mean, I think that's the most reasonable, that's what you asked for originally, when you got that accumulated bond. So I think it belongs...
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we present a warrant article to the town to approve thirty thousand dollars for a design and needs assessment for a new police station.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes three zero for the record. Thank you, chief. Happy New Year. Gentlemen, do we wanna go with warrant articles next, or another appointment to the Budget Committee Chair? I'm just thinking that, go ahead.
May I just ask a question for the, is it okay to ask how you want the wording for the police study? Do you want, do you sign that now?
We're gonna, once we get everything done...
Yeah, okay.
I think we need to make sure that the wording is clear.
Okay.
Works with DRA.
Okay.
In my opinion, at this point, the way you have it worded in here, preliminary is fine, just keep it in there.
Okay.
I think it's gonna work.
Thank you.
Does the board have a problem with the appointment stepping up?
No, not at all.
Okay. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Good morning, Carla.
Good morning. Well, gentlemen, found myself in a bit of a pickle again. I know that Max is calling for me to publicly apologize, that I'm wrong on adhering to Buckley's opinion, he's, and if I don't, that I should resign, and I just want the board of selectmen to know, that I'm not going to apologize for adhering to Mr. Buckley's opinion, and I'm not going to resign. But I also want to make perfectly clear that I know I'm not a policymaker, or a selectman makes the decisions on these kinds of things. So the decision falls to the board of selectmen. Mr. Buckley, last year in September, I'm sure you've read the email that he sent me, seemed pretty clear, and that's where I know the board of selectmen was going on. The Budget Committee didn't have any say in regards to nicknames or the list of names. I still feel very strongly that they should not release, that it's a violation of privacy. If I might suggest, the board of selectmen, if they had any questions, wouldn't it cost you guys to reach out again to the Minutes for Association for second opinion, if you feel you need to? That's what I wanted to say in public. Do you have any questions for me? Do you have all the information you need?
Any comment?
Yeah, I think you refer to us as policymakers, and we can make policy, but we're not gonna, we don't have the authority to show you the door, because you're not an official.
Well, but you could ask that I resign, and I would.
That's what we could, but this is a lot about nothing.
I think it's a lot about nothing as well.
And having been married to a judge for as long as I have, and we receive all of the slip opinions on a daily basis from the Supreme Court, I've been reading Supreme Court opinions since nineteen eighty-one, and I guess I would presume that I would have as good an ability to read those opinions and discern from them what they meant as anybody else in this room, probably better than most of the people in this room. And from my position, I would think that we can make a policy or a decision whether or not to release this information, and if there is an aggrieved person out there, they're certainly welcome to take it to the Supreme Court and ask their opinion. My opinion of, after having read the Supreme Court opinions that were cited, I'm not totally convinced that we're required to release that information, so...
Nor am I, and I read them carefully as well, and, well, every case is different, and the law is the law, you can read it, but that's why we have lawyers and judges to interpret the law. And Mr. Buckley is a well-respected attorney with the Minutes for Association, and he did clearly lay out that he felt it was a violation of employee privacy, and that was back on September twenty-seventh, two thousand sixteen. It's not my decision, though, I feel as if I have landed with the target on my back because I happen to support his opinion, his legal opinion, but I haven't heard...
Well, you don't get the information either.
No, I don't get the information either, and I don't want the information.
We're gonna decide who's gonna get the information.
Yeah. And I also want to make a point clear that I, and I have Gordon here, too, I don't think that the Budget Committee has been at all impeded in our decision-making process because of the lack of the names. We have the numbers, that's what we look at, and I want to applaud the board of selectmen for reducing the amount of employee insurance costs. Do we have a ways to go? Probably, but that's something to think in the end. But I just wanted it on the record that I don't plan on apologizing for supporting this opinion, and I don't plan on resigning. Okay?
Any comments?
Thank you, Carla, for your service and for scanning up and having the target on your back, whether it's deserved or not. And I, I think we always need to be sensitive to private information of individuals, and yes, the public has a right to access governmental information.
I fully support that.
And but the AG, as we know, has specifically identified a number of items of personal information that it is our responsibility to protect when disclosing public records. Attorney Buckley identified a number of in his email to you, and to suggest that they are not protected is... they are not protected is at odds with the AG's guidance, which I think we all rely on, and I guess I've said what I need to say.
I have a couple of comments. First of all, thank you for your service. I was on the Budget Committee for seventeen years, and Chairman for three years, and I always appreciated that the Selectmen said, "You're duly elected, we might not always agree philosophically, but it is your budget, please don't change that." It's a check and balance, and you are served by the people who elected you, and not just the Selectmen or a select few. The second thing is, having been a former prosecutor, I'll tell you, I've always listened to Chip because he's knowledgeable, and he doesn't just talk about the letter of the law, he talks about the spirit of the law, and that's what those slip opinions are about. The next thing is, long before I was a Selectman, long before I moved back to Tufterville, I worked in towns where I worked on these policies, both HIPAA and Right to Know and all that, and as recently as Knowing the Territory, page eleven, and, actually, one-eleven and one-twelve, it is very, very clear that the fact of whether an employee has an individual, two-person, or family plan could reveal information that could reasonably be considered confidential, embarrassing, or an invasion of privacy. And there needs to be an extra measure of caution, whether you call it HIPAA, or public right to know, or whatever. I'll start there. The Right to Know law is very explicit, but there are eleven other places in our RSAs that aren't listed. For example, none of us in the public have a right to know what you take for a book out of a library. None of us in the public have a right to know whether you got a pistol permit or not, and there's nine other instances like that, and the Dillon Rule says that unless the law specifically says you can do it, you don't do it. And these were, this is my training, long before I was a Selectman. There's another concept, and that is, it's called modest privacy, and this is an editorial comment on my part. If you notice, since I've been Chairman, I technically can tell, read the name of the landowner that owes, let's say, a tax, because they didn't pay for their timber tax or whatever. What do I do? I give the lot number. So if someone wants to research it, yes, they can, but you know what? And this editorial comment on my part, all of the citizens in Tufterville, we have more in common than what separates us. So, in closing, I want to personally thank you for your service, please continue.
All right, thank you, and I do hope you'll do something about what's up on Max's website that you're-
Yes. Thank you.
Without that.